Twice. Twice for the crowd. Called a regular commission meeting of Tuesday, October 9th, 2018 to order. And we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, without borders, with liberty and justice for all.
Amy, can you call the rules?
Mr. Crissian?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Scott?
Here.
Mr. Wall?
Here.
Here. Well, my favorite meeting, baseball and beautification. I'm thinking of holding baseball till the end, so that we keep the room full. How's that, guys? Do you want to stay around for a whole meeting?
Yeah.
Sure. We love it.
Better than four.
That's great. This is your civics lesson. Okay, the first item on the agenda is recognition of the Pleasant Ridge Angels Minor League Baseball Quad City Champions.
Mr. Mayor and Commission, it's my pleasure to, I think this is probably the fourth or fifth year that we've had a baseball team in here to recognize, because a lot of these kids have been here multiple times now, because our teams are able to stay together.
You're starting to look kind of familiar.
So it's my pleasure to introduce Angels. The coaches are Eric Scheibl, Tim McGeehan, and John Blaze. And they're going to talk a little bit about the team. They have a gift for you. We have a gift for them.
Whoa. Look at the mayor's already taking his jacket off.
I'm already taking the jacket off.
It's like riding a bike. I just want to say a couple of quick things. I know Tim and John want to say a couple of things. First of all, thank you to you guys, to Shawnee and Scott. The baseball field is phenomenal. Tim and I have been waiting 20 years for that. Our oldest guys are shaving, and it's finally done. But these guys appreciate it. And I was out there Sunday with the boys, after all the rain, and it was immaculate. So thank you for doing that. These kids enjoy it. We enjoy it not having to bring rooms out to mop the place down before we start. So thank you for that. Secondly, I want to thank the parents and all these guys. This is a fun group. We were here last year with the older boys. These guys lost in the last inning, but they won two years ago. So we've done lots of winning. But there are two things more important than winning. We all like to win. But two things this year happened in the playoffs that I wanted to share with you guys that I think sort of shows what sort of community we have and what sort of young men we have. The first one was, we played the Oak Park team, who were they, the Marlins?
Yeah.
I forget. Doesn't matter who they were.
The Oak Park players on it.
Well, one of the dads, after the game is over, were shaking hands. They were not a very good team. Our guys handled it well. One of the dads, who was a coach, came up to me and said, hey, we have a special needs young man on our team. He hasn't got a hit all year. Do you guys mind staying on the field and throw him some pitches and see if he gets a hit? So we had just got done shaking hands. We get our guys together. We explain to them what they want to do. They're all over it. They go back to their positions. We throw a few pitches. The kid hits the ball. We throw it around. He circles the bases like it was Christmas morning. He'd never seen a bigger smoke than this. For being young men, they're pretty talented baseball players, but they're better kids, and they're going to be great for our community as they get older. And the last thing I want to say was, at the championship game, we played a pretty good team. The coach came up to me and said, hey, you know what? Those guys can play baseball. You've done a nice job with them, but they handled winning well. And you should be proud of their attitude. So I wanted you guys to know that, too. And that's all I wanted to say. Thank you, boys, for letting us coach you. Hopefully, you're back next year. And keep working hard. Tim?
Another fun season. Thanks to Scott and Shawnee again for putting things together. It always works great. The kids have been fun to coach for, these kids were probably, what, like six years, a lot of them? Seven years. Their older ones before that. So Eric and I have been coaching for probably eight years, maybe? Fourteen teams with the two kids. So it's been a while. It's been a lot of fun. And you know it's time to, you know, you coached a while, once the kids get taller than you. So I think I'm ace out with kids. But I did want to thank Eric. We've had a good time these last almost decades.
Yeah, it's been a great time.
Yeah, it's been great. Thanks.
Thank you, Tim.
I'm a team statistician, so I'm just going to go through our stats for the year. But just to echo what these guys say, this team came together as a cohesive unit. We're right behind each other. Lots of good sportsmanship on the field. It was great to see. Their overall record was 10-0, and they scored 157 runs, and opponents scored 24 runs against us. Our batting leaders, our batting average champion for the team was Quinn Vivelman with an 8.15 batting average. No, we had several players over 500, including Quinn, Nolan Jones, Kyle Tlang, Alexander Scheibl, and Pearson Clark. Quinn got the most hits at 22 and the most home runs at five, and the most RBIs at 25. And the player that was the most patient at the plate drawing the most walks was Patrick Scheibl with 18. Actually, for Patrick, I mean, they didn't want to pitch to Patrick this year. Patrick, you draw the walks. In pitching, we had a team ERA of 282. In innings pitched, Patrick Scheibl had the most with 15.2 innings and the most strikeouts with 35. And our ERA champs were Nolan Jones and Kyle Tlang, both had a zero ERA in their appearances. Great job, you guys. It was really fun being part of this team. And congratulations. Good job.
He wants to give the mayor a jersey, boys. All right, Charlie, come on. Look at that. You got a hole in for the TV, too, so everybody can see it. You need to expand your closet for all your employees.
I know. Hey, I've got them all. Excellent. Thank you, thank you, thank you. It's a part I like. I'm glad I wore blue.
You got it a little bigger, so you could fit it over your tree top.
You're right.
I thought I was getting bigger.
You know, we want to thank you guys again. This is a fun, we haven't played baseball in two months or three months. These guys were excited to come tonight.
Yeah.
You know, I told Jason on the way, and you guys have other city businesses. There are people who have real things to talk about. But this is special for, this is special for these guys. So thank you so much.
We're stopping right after that. Do we get a picture? Is there going to be a picture?
Oh, yeah, we can take a picture real quick. Do you want to give the coaches a little gift on behalf of the direct department and the city commission? John?
Thank you, guys.
And I want to give a special thanks to Tim and Eric especially. Eric has coached now nonstop from spring to fall, soccer, baseball, for eight or nine years.
Long time, yes.
There hasn't been a season in the, you know, the last 10 years, I don't think Eric's hasn't been one of our coaches. So, and the same with Tim with baseball, it's just been, these guys have been awesome. You know, you can count on them to teach the way it's supposed to be taught, not only the game, but like you said, the life skills. And that's, that's the most important to me. And I remember when I was growing up, I was like, win, 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 win. And you know, somewhere along the way, you kind of got away from that. But it's because, you know what? It's just a game. And in the end, the life skills and the things you learn while you're playing the game are way more important than the winning and losing. So I do want to thank, thank you guys for that. And thank all the kids who have, you know, I watched grow up and turn into some nice young men. So I appreciate it. And thank you to Shawnee for really dealing with the league and whatnot.
And just one other thing I wanted to recognize was, John is also getting up and coaching 68-year-old soccer.
Oh, yeah.
My granddaughter, my granddaughter is in there, so I thank him for that. I don't know how he does it either.
Yeah, our coaches seem to be like dual sports, and they definitely stick with it. So we appreciate them.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Cool. Guys, when I like, I just, come on up here real quick. We can try to get a photo there.
John, come up on the screen.
Who wants to stand up here?
Come on the screen.
Who wants to stand up?
Charlie, over here. Come over there.
I like that. I like being tall.
Are we all in? One, two, three.
You guys, will you get one with holding your trophies up?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Great, thank you, guys.
Thanks, man. Thanks, kid, off the mirror.
Something real quick before we move on. It seems like when we do this, we always have the older kids in here, the, you know, the 11, 12, 13, and 14-year-olds. Because, and that's because they're the leagues that keep the score and go to the playoffs. We do have T-ball and Coach Pitch slash Pitching Machine teams that they don't really keep track of the wins and losses anymore. But they are, they are out there playing and learning the same things, and they move up through and go on to this. So we do want to recognize them, too. It's just they're not kind of the ones keeping score going on for a championship. So we do appreciate them, too. All right?
Excellent. Thank you. Thanks, Scott. Well, that was great. Okay, now we move on to another great item, 2018 Beautification Award.
Yes.
Great. I'm going to stand off on the side, if that's okay.
Certainly.
So as to draw your attention to the beautification award screen over there. So, good evening. My name is Don Daniels, and on behalf of the Beautification Committee, I'm delighted to oversee this evening's recognition, and I join with them to celebrate these four homeowners and their accomplishments with the fine work on their homes. Now, before I get to the presentation, it's important for me to acknowledge, give gratitude the work of the Beautification Committee, whose members include Kathy Gillis, Jennifer Kuber, David Leelock, Melissa Abernathy-Pipple, Jan Troyder, with special thanks to her for serving as the author of the Home Recognition Script, and Jay Foreman, for whom we all extend our special gratitude for his leadership and guidance of this committee. It's also important to thank Tom Troyder, who provided us with his professional photography skills, so expertly and beautifully capturing the essence of each home in this evening's presentation. The role of this committee is to discern and select Pleasant Ridge homeowners who have invested their time and talents to enhance the aesthetics of their home. As you can see, the city is divided into seven zones, and each committee member selects two potential recipients. The committee then reconvenes and whittles that list down to four homeowners. Each of these recipients will receive a beautiful poetic tile commissioned especially for this recognition. They will also receive signage acknowledging this achievement. And as a special bonus, it's my understanding, our city manager waived each homeowner's water bill fee for an entire year. Just kidding. Really just kidding. Really just kidding. We could only drink.
My house is bright.
Yeah, that would, that would incentivize many people with the mountain recognition. 19 Poplar Park, Matt Anstett and Bradley Stanley. 19 Poplar Park is a real eye catcher with its unique architecture, a classic California bungalow, which features red cedar singles, copper trim, and a field stone chimney. Perfectly matched boxwoods, roses, and mixed perennials line the front walk that leads to a long covered porch. Meticulously groomed hedges replicate the horizontal lines of the home and provide frontage for an abundance of hydrangeas. Follow the great paving stone path adjacent to the drive on the right. Also, an attractive gate on the left offers a bonus glimpse of the formal garden and fountain in back. Our appreciation for the work on this beautiful home goes to Matt Anstett and Brad Stanley. Please. 32 Devonshire, Amy and Jim Bowering. Thoughtfully designed and immaculately maintained, the home of Amy and Jim Bowering is a prime example of an award winner in Pleasant Ridge. The paint palette of gray with white trim is crisp and elegant. A handsome brick bordered walk leads to a classic portico and a deep burgundy door trimmed in copper. The porch is flanked by two generously filled pots of annuals and border bordered foundation plantings, which include a varied collection of euanus, hosta, and feathery grasses. Evergreen ground cover under a giant oak tree, excuse me, completes the picture at 32 Devonshire. Congratulations. 29 Cambridge, Megan and Eric Pot. This center entrance colonial at 29 Cambridge features black shingles and shutters and an attractive red door, all set off by the soft cream exterior of the home. The upper curve of the entrance porch is echoed in an attractive third floor eyebrow window. The landscaping features a variety of textures, levels, and shades of green, punctuated with pots of colorful annuals. The tier of boxwood hedges on the left leads to a large rock faced bed, then circles around to a line of columnar arborvitae, providing privacy for the sun porch and rear yard. Follow the curved brick path, and you'll find a secluded garden bench and gate to the rear yard. Beautiful porch pots complete the picture of the outstanding home of Megan and Eric Pot. It's also important to note that the pots will be hosting, the Pleasant Ridge Garden Club fundraiser home for the holiday on December 14th. Hosting this fundraiser will benefit the Pleasant Ridge Garden Club. Tickets are available. Still available for this event. 60, yes, there you go. Megan Pot, you're serious. 66 Wellesley, Gerard Verga. When Gerard purchased this 1924 American four-square style home, it needed a complete renovation both inside and out. From necessity, the inside was managed first. When he eventually tore off the 1950s pink and red aluminum siding, Gerard discovered the original cedar shake siding on the second floor, slatboard cladding on the first, and a winged waistcoat detail that provided a belt line between the two. This inspired him to take the home back to its origins, but with a fresh contemporary twist. He removed the improperly supported front addition and worked with an architect to design an attractive craftsman style porch sized more in keeping with the original one. He then added deteriorated planting beds and filled them with hosta and astilbe transplants, along with annuals and perennials selected for shape, color, and bloom type. Today's 66 Wellesley shines as an example of what can be done to recreate and refresh an older home while respecting its past. Congratulations. The Beautification Committee, along with our entire community, hope these homeowners accept this gift and recognition as a testament to their commitment of improving the overall aesthetic, not only of their homes, but of our entire city. Thank you for investing in this community. We all love and treasure. I would like to have them all stand, and as we congratulate our beautification award recipients, Amy and Jim Bowering, Gerard Verga, Megan and Eric Pot, and Matt Anstett and Brad Stanley. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Are you two different houses?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. They're just in one area.
Yeah.
Would you like to host the annual?
Yeah. Your next year.
Wonderful. Thanks, Dan.
So much. Beautiful.
Terrific. All right. Next item on the agenda, public discussion, items not on the agenda. Step forward, give your name and address, and go from there.
Boy, the name is tricky. Lynn Stojic Nelson. Hi, Ann, how are you?
Good.
I want to bring up one of the most popular topics in Pleasant Ridge, that's traffic. I went through your, it was about 100 pages, your September City Commission Agenda Materials. And in there, there was a topic called Oakland Park-Silvan, but when you went through it, it actually had some impact on Elm Park, which is my block. And I read it and talked to some neighbors about it as well, because I didn't want, I wanted it feed off someone and not get some feedback from folks. So I did talk to some neighbors, and I think they all shared our concern. I don't know, Jim, if anybody else has contacted you, but I kind of left it up to them as to what they were going to do and said I was going to speak today. But one of the traffic changes, and I'm not talking about the right on red sign, is, has to do with the southbound, I guess you call it the Woodward Service Drive. And right now, it's a right turn only lane that stops at Oakland Park, has a big arrow in it that goes like this, and it has a sign that says right turn only. And the concern on Elm Park, and I've lived here for more than 25 years, has always been the afternoon traffic that runs between 4:00 and 7:00 p.m. And we get a lot of people that turn and just cut through the neighborhood, and we realize that. But currently, it's pretty much evenly divided between Poplar, Elm, and Oakland. Millington has a no turn from 4:00 to 7:00. People might not follow it, but it's there. So we feel like, okay, that's equitable. Oakland Park is the gateway to the city. We know that it typically gets more, and it has a light, so it's more traffic. But from, when I went through the documents, I noticed that there was one proposal, and I'm not sure what the status is of it, whether it's go forward or under consideration, because we all wanted to have feedback on it. And that was to stripe out that turn lane and back it up to Elm. And obviously, our concern is that once you do that, you're going to create a right turn on lady, lane into Elm Park, putting our safety more at risk because of increased traffic. Because we honestly don't think if you stripe it out, anybody's going to go like this, then go around, and then go like this. We just don't think we're going to do that into Oakland. So we feel like the traffic's going to increase between Poplar and Elm. I would prefer to just get rid of the lane all the way from 696 all the way to Oakland. I don't think we need all that space on that service drive. I think it was overbuilt. But my understanding from Jim was that MDOT really didn't want to go that far, because then you have to deal with the double right turn lanes there, which also are not needed. You don't really need two right turn lanes there. So I wanted to come before you to, number one, get the status of that project, and really have you think about it again, and about how it impacts us on Elm Park. I know there's no perfect solution to traffic issues here, but we, I talked to quite a few of my neighbors, and we're all concerned about the increased traffic. And Jim did acknowledge there would be increased traffic. I do think once it's done, it's hard to correct it. So I prefer that, you know, we talk about it now and really think through it. And I know that part of this is to make it safer for bicyclists and pedestrians. I understand that, but I don't want it at the cost of the safety of the folks that live on my block. And I do think that, you know, the right turn on red was the right move. I can't tell you how many times in 28 years I've been on that corner looking this way, wherein there's somebody coming on the sidewalk the opposite way. I also think that maybe taking a look at that crosswalk and lengthening it a bit, doing some things there so people can feel like they can cross. You know, we're always going to have that issue that we have a large state highway right next to us. And, you know, I certainly want to make it as safe as possible for everyone, but I am concerned about the impact on Elm. I've also, I didn't have time to talk to everybody. I also talked to some people on Poplar who expressed the same concern. So that's why I wanted to appear before you, to have you think about it before it becomes reality, and maybe tell me, you know, where it's at, and is, can you reconsider that? I know it was one of like three or four options on the page, and it looked like you implemented the no turn on red, but not necessarily that one. So wasn't sure. So that's why I'm here.
Good. I see a picture already up on the screen.
Look at the, look at the turnaround. Yeah, you might, I mean, I talked to quite a few neighbors. I told them to go ahead and, you know, reach out to Jim or ask questions. So that's where we're at.
Okay. So the, probably the thing that I've heard the most since I've been here is about how horrible it is to cross Woodward when you're on a bike or on foot. So that was the genesis of this whole thing, trying to address that issue. It was one of the first things that Commissioner Wall came and talked to me about after she got elected. So this is something that we've been pursuing for quite a while. The issue you have is we do have a dedicated right turn lane that dies at Oakland Park. So you've got five lanes of traffic, and the way that the geometry at this intersection is, it pushes this crosswalk at an odd angle. So basically, your crossing distance across southbound Woodward from Oakland Park is 180% of the crossing distance of this lane. So in working with the transportation engineer, the alternative we came up with was to do corner bump outs to reduce this to four lanes, just like it's four lanes here, shorten that crossing distance. You end up with the same situation on both sides. There will be no elimination of right turns at Oakland Park. It'll just, it'll be a combination through, it'll be an option through turn lane from the right side here now, just like it is at Silvan. The lane currently, what happens is after the turn lane ends here at Oakland Park, there's a taper. So you can actually continue through the intersection and then find your way to merge over if you don't need to turn there. Because MDOT is going to be building this for us, they reviewed these plans and approved them. They are not, because of underground utilities and overall cost, they are not going to be eliminating the lane here. It's going to be striped out. And the striping for this lane is going to work exactly the same as this taper. So you'll, the striping won't just end at Elm Park. It tapers back to the curb south of Elm Park. So it doesn't, doesn't show on this plan, because the intersection is farther up, but this striping dies back into the curb somewhere right around here. So just like it is right at Oakland Park now, you'll be able to visually continue through that intersection and then merge over to either turn at Oakland Park or continue south. So, you know, that's the balance. The number of cars, based on MDOT data, and this is at peak hour, so the number one peak, most busy hour of the day, 4:00 to 5:00 p.m., 80 cars turned right from Woodward onto Oakland Park. So, you know, that's the universe of cars. I don't think it's, I don't think it's unreasonable to expect that many of those cars are still going to turn onto Oakland Park, because many people turn onto Oakland Park to do the turnaround to go over to the east side. It's not really an alternative to turn into Elm, drive all the way down to, you know, from a psychology standpoint, that doesn't save you any time. So there will be some people that continue to turn on Oakland Park. I don't know what the numbers are going to be. It will push some additional traffic to those other streets, but, you know, they, even if it was half of those 80 cars, that's 40 cars an hour, that's one car every 90 seconds that would be going down these other streets in town. You know, we're not, this is, it is a question of people are driving, people are getting to their destination, and, you know, does the safety improvement for pedestrians and bicyclists crossing Woodward at Oakland Park and Silvan, which it's where the light is, it's where probably 95% of people cross Woodward in Pleasant Ridge, the other five, the other 3% along 696, and then the other 2% is running from the gas station across the median to Dr. George's driveway. You know, that's, that's the question that we're balancing here. So this is in, MDOT is constructing it for us, because they're redoing the traffic signals across Woodward next year, and they're also doing ADA improvements. They're putting in the plates and making those crosswalks meet ADA standards. So because they're doing that project, they'll be building this for us. And that's, that's where we stand. It's the balance of, you know, what's important to us.
So if I may respectfully comment, I don't, if you have a right turn only lane with a right turn arrow like you do now at Oakland, I do believe a lot of the cars will go by. And I will tell you, working on my lawn, I mean, I was amazed when we had bridge closing, how many people still came down the street, even though it said road closed. I watch every day and watch people go down there and turn left. I mean, they are all going down Elm and Poplar and turning left to go further southbound. I do believe it's going to put our safety at risk. I do believe if we're going to do it, we should do it right and tell MDOT to get rid of that lane entirely. There's, there's too much space there. There doesn't need to be that space there. And I do hope that you'll consider it, especially since the residents that are going to be the most affected, and, you know, frankly, the taxpayers are the ones that didn't know about this, really. I talked to all my neighbors and to a person, they did not realize that that change was making place, taking place, and when they did, they were concerned about it. And I think 40 cars is a lot of cars, you know? And that right turn only arrow thing on, on Millington, I mean, they, they were able to get that, you know? And obviously, there's an issue there with afternoon rush, you know? So I hope you'll reconsider this and, and not make sure you take into account our feedback before, you know, approving a project like that that has impact on a neighborhood street that really is not, it was never designed for that kind of traffic, you know?
Just to clarify, so the right turn lane when you're coming off the service drive, there will be that lane, and then somewhere just before you get to Elm Park, the crosshatching will come?
After Elm Park.
After Elm Park.
So it's south of the Elm Park intersection. So basically, visualize.
Coming in the lane, and then the lane starts. It's still there, but it's.
Visualize, right, exactly. So visualize what the curb does south of the Oakland Park intersection, where you can drive through the intersection, you're in that lane, and then you've got a chance to merge over.
That's when the lane disappears.
Exactly.
The lane is still there, but it's.
So visualize what the curb does south of the Oakland Park intersection, where you can drive through the intersection, you're in that lane, and then you've got a chance to merge over.
That's when the lane disappears.
Exactly.
It's kind of, the lane is still there, but it's-
But you're not going to have-
It disappears over time. So it, it, the same thing, the same thing will be done with paint, south of Elm Park.
Right, but you're not putting an arrow that, before that paint starts, it goes like this onto Elm, and you're not putting a right turn only sign prior to Elm, because then you're really, the drivers are really going to be going that way. So are you just striping it out, or are you putting an arrow that turns? Like, right now, you know, Oakland's got that arrow, and it says right turn only. So I'm a driver, and believe me, I don't think people are going to go down Oakland. I mean, if you're going down there, you're not going to swerve around, get back in the center, and then hang a right. You're just not going to do that. You're going to turn, this is the cut-through traffic. They, they get through their rhythm and they know where to go, so. And then that's what creates all the, the issues on Ridge, right? That people talk about. So, I'm just concerned that it looks like a right turn only lane right into Elm. And, you know, regardless of the striping, you know, if they're, if they're going to just have striping there and no signage that says you must turn right, or there's an arrow going like that, and I don't think that's what MDOT, that they're going to do that. They're going to put a right turn only lane in there. And that, that is just, to me, not appropriate. So. I said my piece. And thanks, Ann, again, for, I can go late into the, into the fitness center. I haven't seen you there lately, but my fob's been working, so.
Keith Cunningham, the two of us, like, worked hard with Scott.
So please, and keep us up to date. I mean, please get back to me and let me know. I don't know if there's anything you can do about it. I mean, I used to work for government, so I know that MDOT only has so much budgeting, but I don't understand why they just don't bump out that, that street and make it narrower. And even, even better yet, put up a burn and make it into a bicycle lane that's protected somewhat, you know. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
Cheryl Reynolds, 59, Kensington. Speaking for Cam and I, is that okay? Gotcha.
She let you out.
And several other neighbors on Kensington, and Wellesley, and Sylvan, with small dogs. So we're here to talk about the dog park entrance. It's been almost two years since it's been redone. We came in April, on April 10th, to this meeting, and requested a status update. And we were told that as soon as the weather breaks, a couple weeks, it's going to be fixed. We've got a plan. Excellent. We made it to two weeks, that went by, no work. Waited another week, sent some emails, talked to some people, talked to Ann, talked to Scott, sent lots of emails. Temporary solutions were given, which were great. It allowed us access. We got our own little combination to the lock, which was helpful, until someone broke the lock. We had a temporary dual pass key thing. We had one for the main gate and one for the new gate. That stopped working after a week. I would assume that when this job was budgeted for, and RFQs were sent out to do the work, that we budgeted for a company to install a gate. It was part of the plan. I came to the park, and Jason did an excellent presentation, and showed all kinds of great things that were going to happen with the swing sets, and the dog park, and the community garden, and everything else. I, I don't think that that's in Scott's, I love Scott, he does a great job. He does a ton of stuff. I don't think that's in his job description, to be an electrician, and a gate installer, and a computer programmer, and whatever else needs to get both passes working on both gates with the same key. I've been told we're going to have to have two different keys. So, I, I don't know. I don't, I don't know exactly how the bidding process went on that. I would assume it was budgeted for. Right now, there's a household power strip plugged into a utility outlet with a bunch of stuff all over the place and a bucket upside down. I have lots of pictures. You know, I posted a funny one of my dog looking, trying to get in, but, you know. Now it's almost winter, so. And we're still getting jumped on by bigger dogs constantly. And that's the nature of dogs, you know. I mean, I've got a small, little 20-pound dog, and other people have, you know, 80-pound dogs. The 80-pound dogs all play, and the little ones go to the small area. That's what I'd like to do, too.
So as of today, the gate is functional? So it's, it's, it's working?
Have you been up to it?
The, the issue we had was-
No one sent notice either.
Of what?
That it's working.
Because it was, Scott was working on it literally this afternoon. So, the, you know, the, the issue we ran into here is that we were trying to transition, we are transitioning the dog park to the yellow key fobs. And because of that, that created some hiccups in the process. We had to work with the company on getting some special accommodations made for that to work. That dragged out the process a little ways. We had some issues with DTE dropping the, so yeah, it dragged on for a while, absolutely. But the, the benefit now is that we're going to have much more control over the dog park passes. One of the, with the magnetic key card, all of those expire on the same day. So if somebody comes in and buys a dog park pass in October, that is valid through March, and that's it. With the new key fobs, when you buy your dog park pass, it's going to be good for a year from that date. So it gives us more flexibility to do, really just manage our, our access systems throughout the city.
Will they be able to be used on both entrances?
Yes. So the, the magnetic key card reader is going to stay up until March, because people who have the magnetic key cards may not come in for the fobs. So that will stay up until March on the one gate. You'll have the yellow fob, which, if you already have a wellness center pass, we're going to be automatically activating, you don't have to do anything. So if you have a dog park pass, you'll have your key fob activated for that other gate, without having to do anything. And that will run through March 31st of next year, just like the magnetic one does. So, the, when we were actually bidding this out, nobody, there was nobody we could find that, that did or could provide the solution that we wanted to come up with for this. It was all a lot of magnetic cards. And then, you know, we had to overcome some, some issues, and things that popped up along the way. We had to get wireless access for it to talk to our overall system. So, yeah, it took a while. It was, it was frustrating, but it's done. Test it out tomorrow. I don't know if your yellow readers are going to be activated tomorrow, because we have to go through a manual redo.
What do we need to do?
They should be working by 10 o'clock. There's not that many of them.
Okay.
There's 50 of them, and half of them, half of them are already converted.
Okay.
Now, we talked about a lock, Scott, for that double gate.
Yep, the double gate's going to lock, so we put on, um, put on tomorrow. Because we have to coordinate with Briarlar, because they, that's how they get the lawnmowers in. So we got to get a combination lock, a double lock. So that would be locked up tomorrow, and then we're going to hang up some signs, because, that should come up. But one, one of the things that we're, one of the things that is, like, I'm struggling with now, it's, it's been a process, and I apologize, you know, it's, uh, is that the gates are new, so they don't like, they're like, they're tough to close. They're not, like, worn in. So the automatic gate closers aren't strong enough to close those gates automatically. I have two of the strongest ones they make, and it just doesn't do it. So, once they get worn, not worn in a little bit, those should work better, but those, those gates aren't, like, automatically closing. So we, we're going to hang some signs for people to close them, because they're, they're always open. Like, those two, like, the double gates, so people can get into the small area and the large area. And one of them's always open, and there's dogs just running around. So it should be better, because people will be going in there. So when they go in, they'll close it behind them. Right now, they're not going in there, so somebody opens it and just puts a little box away. So I'm going to try to find a closer that's strong enough, but they're just, they're just really hard to, the fences are really hard to move, and it's just engineering, they won't push it. So I think people will close them until, until they're broken in, and then, and then the regular gate closers will work on them. So that's really, yeah, but the, there's, um, there are some people that have dog park passes, and residents that don't have wellness center fobs. So they'll, they'll have to come in, they'll have to go to the community center, and we'll activate them and get them going. And we can activate one for the wellness center at the same time. It will help us be able to do that. And then the non-residents will have to do the same thing. But everybody that has them, we're-
If you have a fob, it'll be automatically-
The nice thing is, is that we're trying to, as I'm trying to cross-reference the households, so you'll be able to add everybody in the household to, like, a pass. So if you have, you know, a husband and wife, or two partners that, you know, right now you only have one key card, I can add it to both of their fobs. And so either, either person could, would be able to use it.
Well, it's definitely much easier, because everyone loses their other-
Yep, exactly.
We just replaced them, we found it.
The key cards, the key cards are about $7, our cost to replace. The fobs are, like, .35. So that's a huge thing. And people keep a hold of those, because if you don't have it, you're not getting into the gym. Yeah, straight up, so.
So up and running tomorrow?
Yeah, I mean, if, if, I have a lot of room there. You won't have to do anything. If you have a fob, you're good to go.
All right.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
We expect to see a-
Yep. If you look, it'll work, it'll work, it'll work just like the old one. It'll work just like the old one. There's a pole, and you'll see, you'll see the fob readers on, like, the inside of the pole.
I tried many times.
I had to move it, because somebody, like, somebody vandalized my, my wires, but anyway. So it's on the inside, so you use that to get in and out. You scan to get in, you scan to get out, just like the other one. So, okay?
All right, Ross.
Thanks, you guys. It's always nice when we solve something.
Sounds immediate.
That was good.
That's action.
Hello.
Hi.
My name's Patricia Agnasia, so I live at Knight Amherst for 27 years. And I got the tree removal notice letter. It's freaking me out. I have two beautiful trees in front of my house that I can't see anything wrong with either of them. And I don't know which tree, because it says "the" tree. And I didn't know if this is, what's going on. Are these trees sick? Is this just lifespan? I have, these are beautiful trees. I'm a tree hugger, that's why I live here. So anytime a tree has to come down, I immediately go into mourning. So I need to know why I have two beautiful trees in front of my house, and I don't think either of them are sick.
I can't answer the question for you now. We've got the evaluation that the arborist did. We have the, we generate a list of trees that aren't looking healthy every year, and then we turn that over to an arborist that we contract with to evaluate the trees and give us his recommendations. I don't have that in front of me, so I can't answer your question now. But if you send me an email or give contact information, we can follow up tomorrow and let you know what the arborist saw.
Do you know if it's a lot of trees that are coming down in the city?
There's not too many that are being removed this year.
And do they, how do they know which trees to check out of these thousands of trees? Are you going by when they were planted, possibly, or?
No, our DPW guy, as he drives around, just makes a list of, he's had, he's had tree maintenance training. He's not an arborist.
Do you see something that concerns them?
Yeah, he, so he makes, he generates a list. As homeowners call, we generate a list, and then we have the arborist evaluate them.
I can't imagine what he saw in my tree. Would I be able to have that information?
Yeah, oh, absolutely. Because I just took it, it's not-
Because they look totally healthy to me, but I'm not an arborist.
No, no secret.
But, I mean, the bigger one is in a blaze of glory right now. Beautiful gold, and every year, same thing. So it doesn't look sick to me, but.
I, you, you may have received the letter in error, I don't know.
I hope so. Absolutely hope so, because this is like, immediately, I just got a pit in my stomach. Because I can't, I love those trees. And the bigger one, if it's the bigger one, it's, when I park on the street, I, I'm just going to be baking in the sun. It's just not going to look right.
Amy is signaling that it's an ash tree?
Without that tree.
There's one of them there that's an ash tree that's marked for removal. I didn't look, I didn't look specifically at, you know-
I know that there was one, I know there was one tree in the list. I do remember that the arborist said that, that the tree was not in bad condition, but it's showing activity for the emerald ash borer, the bug that kills all the ash trees. So maybe a situation where, you know, we've lost over the years a lot of ash trees. And if your tree has the emerald ash borer, if that is the case, then it's only a matter of time.
So they might preemptive strike also, based on it being an ash? If they didn't actually see something yet?
No, the only way we take out ash trees is if there's signs of the bug activity, or if they're already in decline. And the ash trees are one specific one where we have, we went, we know the inventory of where all the ash trees are in the city, and the arborist looks at them every year, just because of the, the emerald ash borer and the issues with that tree.
That's very sad news to me. All right, thank you.
But you can certainly get more information.
Yeah, so it is my big tree. That's how I pray.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, sure. Go ahead, Doc, please. You're saying the same thing.
Well, I just-
It's amazing, Julian.
Yeah, exactly. It's like, get out of my head, Eric, Scott. Is it, where's the stated tree removal policy for private property? Is that something that residents could reference?
Private property?
Yes. Is this, is this on, it's on city property? Okay, all right. So there's not a policy for the city to take action on trees that are on private property?
Not unless there's a compelling life safety emergency issue.
All right. No, I appreciate the clarification. And as far as any kind of appeal process, or some sort of consultation with the, the arborist, as far as maybe there's a solution to treatment or something like that, is that maybe an avenue that a concerned resident could pursue?
Maybe the treatment for, we don't do the treatment on the ash trees, because it's, the treatment is the same thing that kills all the bees. So we know that there's environmental sensitivities in town, and, you know, we may not want to be shooting, essentially, roundup into our trees. So that's, you know, ours, that's why our city policy is, it's kind of the worst of bad choices. But when it comes to ash trees that are showing emerald ash borer activity, we have to remove them.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
That's it? That's exactly what you were going to say?
Almost. Scary, it is scary.
Are there any other items for public discussion? Thank you. We'll move on to governmental reports.
Hi.
Good night.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
I am here in place of the chief, who is on vacation this week.
Again?
Again. I'm more than happy to stand in for him. Just wanted to give everyone a couple quick updates. We have had some cars that were gone through this past month. Lock your doors, because one of the cars that went through had the key fob in the car, and when they woke up, the car was gone. So we recovered the car. Whoever took the car actually locked their car, locked the car after they took it and took the key fob, but we, we did recover the car. So just make sure to lock your doors. We have had a couple things stolen, so we get them in the summer, we get them right into fall time. So please take care of that. Other than that, crime-wise, we're good. Traffic-wise, we just want to remind everyone, now no turn on red at Oakland Park and Sylvan. As always, it has been at Millington, no turn between four and seven. We've been hitting that pretty hard. And last week, I was out there for two and a half hours, and we were down to about six or seven cars that turned, rather than the 30 or 40 a month ago. So. And then, as always, we have the school traffic. For those of you that don't know, the chief went to the school board meeting last month. Spoke there. We're working on everything we can. The city's been trying to explore every avenue possible to try to alleviate some of those issues over and down lower, so. But we're out there every day, making sure that everyone's getting there safe and getting bars sewn down, so.
Is it getting better?
Yeah, it's, it, it happens, it's cyclical every year. Yeah, it's, it, it happens, it's cyclical every year. By October, the, the parents kind of get it. Um, we can't do a whole lot about the traffic on Ridge Road. It gets backed up. So if you live in the area and you need to use Ridge Road, between 750 and 820, I would suggest an alternative route. And between 250 and 320, I would suggest a alternative route. So, uh, we're pulling over the cars that are going on the, uh, left side of the double lines. Um, so keep that in mind as well, that you still can't pass there even though traffic's all backed up. So, I, here for any questions?
No, man.
Oh, God.
Easy, man.
All right, easy, mom. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I see no other governmental officials around. So we will move on to the next item, which is city commission liaison reports. We'll start out with Commissioner Kriziyak with Ferndale Public Schools.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, at the September 17th school board meeting, uh, kicked off with the introduction of this year's student representatives for the 2018, 2019 school year. This is a fantastic, uh, program that the school board has where they take two representatives from the, um, Ferndale High School and University High School and invite them to give updates on what's going on in their school and to, um, inform the school board and the members of the community about activities there. Um, and this year's representatives, our familiar name, Zoe Butters will be the, um, student representative for Ferndale High School and Sidney Embry will be the student representative for University High School. So they were welcomed, then gave their first updates and, uh, are excited, um, to be engaged in that program. A voice for the students, really cool. Uh, there was also an enrollment update. It was a good news. Uh, in 2017, there were 2,880 and this year's count is at 3,058. So that's an increase of students. Uh, they had been projecting, um, some of their internal projections were for a loss of enrollment. So seeing an overall bump, um, was very welcome news at the meeting. Um, as Sergeant Reed mentioned, Chief Noack, our own chief was there to, um, give an update on the, um, traffic issues there. Um, it's something that the city and the school board, um, hopefully will work on continuously to improve that. Um, chief, uh, was a really great representative on that issue. So I appreciate him being there for that. Um, another familiar name, there is the appointment of Lisa Wright to the Special Education Parental Advisory Committee. Um, she's a PR resident. Um, um, this is for a three-year term on the Oakland School Board of Education. It's an advisory committee, um, for, um, students and families with, um, special needs and special education. Uh, it's really a voice and advocacy opportunity for those families. And I really believe Lisa will be a great fit for that role for the next three years and be a strong advocate for our community's children. So I was really glad to see her in that position. Um, some other great news, uh, on the football, on the gridiron and the marching band, the football team beat Hazel Park 55 to nothing, which is incredible.
Poor Hazel Park.
Incredible score. But I didn't know there were so many Hazel Park fans.
No!
Sorry to bring the bad news if you hadn't heard. Um, but no, the football team is enjoying a very successful year this year at the expense of Hazel Park currently. But, um, the marching band, always a sense of pride, um, in this community. They won first place at the Linden Invitational. Um, so their string of success continues. Um, really, uh, good result there. Um, and at the high school, this was the last building, I'm sure we all noticed, at lower, um, the lower elementary, the learning garden that was installed there. The last one to be installed was at the high school on it, and it finishes a grant from Big Green, which is a nonprofit organization focused on improving student health through garden-based learning. So the high school got their, um, learning garden and, uh, it's a great success and will give years of great opportunities for learning, um, about, um, healthy living and the interaction between, you know, gardening and health issues. So that's, that's really a great installment over there. There's one big date I've been asked to communicate and share with the Pleasant Ridge community. Monday, October 22nd at 6:00 PM, it'll be held at the Ferndale High School Auditorium. Um, this is the beginning of a potential, uh, ballot question for 2020, May of 2020. So this would be, um, you know, a few years off, but the school board and the administration really are interested in getting the residents of this community involved at the onset of this process. Um, so the first very important meeting on this whole process, uh, will be Monday, October 22nd, 6:00 PM at the Ferndale High School Auditorium. So this will initiate the conversation about the possibility of placing a bond initiative on the May 2020 ballot. Um, this initial conversation on Monday will be about how bonds, how bonds work in general and how much it could cost, uh, this community's taxpayers. Uh, what will be the timeline of the bond process and what things would the, uh, bond monies, um, go, go towards as far as improving, uh, education in our community? So.
Can I have one thing on that?
Yeah, go ahead.
And it, and it's just because I've spoken with the superintendent before and one thing about this whole, in con, anyways, um, with the bond issue, they, the current bond is expiring. So it's not a new bond. It'd be, basically be a, a replacement for the existing bond. So it could be increased a little bit. It could be the same as the existing bond. I think that's what they're looking to explore right now. So just for complete clarity, I want people to be.
Yeah, for sure.
You know, taxes are gonna be more than they have.
Yes.
That's, that's the situation. The current bond rolls off, so they need to replace it with something. And what is that something?
Yes.
Is what they're looking to do. So.
Okay. Jim, I really appreciate that clarification because it is vital and it, it really starts the conversation from a, a point of understanding about, hey, this is something that would be a continuation, not a new, um, tax. Uh, so I really applaud the school board for taking this initiative to garner, uh, resident input, whether your children are currently enrolled, whether they've enrolled previously, whether you're a homeowner in a district. This is a crucial question for all of us and having the opportunity at the onset to participate in formulating, uh, this plan, I think should be applauded. And I encourage everyone to be there on Monday, October 22nd at 6:00 PM at the Ferndale High School Auditorium and take part in this, uh, this, uh, exciting process. So, and that's all I have, mayor. The, the next meetings for the school board will be Monday, October 15th. So Monday, the 15th is the next school board meeting. The following Monday is the, um, initial meeting for the potential school bond issue.
Quick question. Um, in terms of the enrollment, did they break it out in terms of in district and school of choice?
There wasn't a distinction between school of choice. There was a distinction on the, the various schools. So some schools saw overall in, increase in numbers, some flat, some lower. But overall in the district, uh, specifically K through 12 saw 130 student bump in specifically those grades. Um, but I could find out those numbers or.
That's always an issue in any school district. If you're counting on schools of choice kids, you know, those, those change so rapidly. And they're also, and schools of choice, as those go up, it tends to be the district, in district kids, parents start to think about leaving and going elsewhere. And so it's, it's very, that, that mix is always critical, especially if it's growing.
Yes.
You want it to grow in district. We all want the, we want people in the district supporting the district and not having to go outside just to keep your numbers up. And so that's.
Yes. Uh, the director of communications, uh, Bill Good, gave the numbers. Um, his presentation is online, um, or you could definitely email him. Uh, he did say that the, in the non-school of choice, uh, did not see a decrease, remembering saying that. So, um, but yeah, for specific numbers, either I or, you know, you could shoot them in email for sure.
Great. It's good news, Henry.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, any questions for Jason?
Excuse me, mayor. Brett had a question earlier, but I already answered.
Glad.
Just a little thing.
Commissioner Perry, planning DDA.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, the planning commission and DDA did not meet yet, but we're gonna meet on October 22nd. We're gonna compete with the 2020 bond discussion. Uh, but on October 27th at 7:00 PM, 22nd at 7:00 PM, right here at City Hall. Um, what we did, but there is still good news and we're getting very positive feedback. I'm seeing lots of good, like, messages and stuff on Facebook and everything about the, um, the Chariot. And, you know, people are still, you still see people are still just finding out about it and downloading the app and things like that. Lots, you know, I've saw people going, you know, to use it just for social, like, partying with their friends and taking it into, to Ferndale and other people like with, with their family. So it's a really fun experience and stuff. So everybody download the app at, is it at chariot.com or?
Chariot.com, I think.
Or, um, the, it's under Chariot on the, um, on your app store.
The app store.
So everybody try it out. So it's on Thursdays, Fridays and Saturdays from 4:00 PM till midnight. So lots of fun. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Scott, historical commission.
Yes, um, a couple of quick notes for the historical commission. Uh, in their last meeting, a decision was made to move the home and garden tour from late spring to, uh, towards late summer and fall. Uh, it provides, uh, homes an opportunity to get ready after the school season has started. And it is actually a very beautiful time in the city. If you've driven around town this time of year, things are beginning to change color. Uh, and it's just, uh, it's a great time to have the home and garden tour and it doesn't interfere with some other things that are happening around, uh, town. So, um, uh, for those of you that have not yet participated in the home and garden tour, uh, just sort of mark the general September, October time in your calendar. They are looking for homes to participate next year. We typically get six, seven houses, uh, on the tour. And, uh, it's, uh, a really fun opportunity to show off your home, uh, what you've done with your yard. And, um, definitely looking forward to, uh, having homes participate. Feel free to contact any of the commissioners or just come up to City Hall if you're interested in participating. And that's, uh, the news from the historical commission. Our next meeting will be on, uh, actually the day after election day, I think, on November 7th at 7:00 PM. And it'll either be here or over at.
It'll be here.
It'll be here. Okay. It'll be here.
There you go.
All right. It'll be here. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Wall, recreation commission.
Okay, hunker down. There's some stuff to say here. Um, so the, uh, master plan for the Parks and Rec, the five-year plan is on the website. We are opening it for comment now. Uh, we ask that you comment by November 7th. You can, um, write it, send an email, but however you'd like to communicate it. It's very exciting. You should check it out. Um, we're having the public hearing on, um, November 13th at 7:30 to finalize it. Upcoming events, uh, Tuesday, October 16th, 3:45, cutest thing ever junior club, Juju Garden Club meeting. They put it in a really nice situation and the kids love it. They create adorable things to bring home. Um, Thursday, October 18th, monthly movie, Ocean's Eight, the female version. Um, 12:15 and 6:15 showings. Uh, Saturday, October 20th, toddler boo bash at 10:00 AM. Might just stop by anyways. Um, Sunday, October 21st, Halloween hayride, um, 3 to 5. And it, there's promised to be new activities this year, which I can't disclose at this point. Um, Monday, October 22nd, computer class. Thursday, October 25th, 50+ Club, day trip to creative art studio, Chartreuse and Urbaneo. I think I said it right. Um, in Detroit. Thursday, November 1st, 50+ Club again, trip to Lumen, which I heard was really good for dinner, and Prismatic for traveling art display. Saturday, November 3rd, Imagination Station at 10:00 AM. And Thursday, November 8th, 50+ Club again, um, day trip to Federal Reserve Bank for tour and lunch. It's a lot going on. And then we are gonna have our rec meeting. Let me tell you when our next rec meeting is. October... It's not. It's not on Halloween.
It'll need to be the, the week before or the week after. We'll post it.
It's undetermined at this point.
It'll be the week.
Too long.
Be the 26th, no, the 25th or the weekend or whatever.
We don't know at this point, right?
Stay tuned.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
No.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Okay, moving on. Consent agenda. Uh, we have four items. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda unless there's any discussion?
Your honor, I move the consent agenda be approved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any comments? Here we have a vote.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Kriziyak?
Yes.
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes, bless you.
Bless you.
Okay, motion is approved. We move on to what else but traffic calming. And Ridge Road pedestrian.
We never talk about that.
Now, traffic calming and Ridge Road pedestrian crossing update. Jim?
All right. Um, the immediate question in front of us is to, uh, evaluate and consider the stop for pedestrian signs on Ridge. Uh, but I wanted to also take a chance to step back and look at kind of the totality of the efforts we've been making on Ridge Road and what the, what the data, what the results are of all of those things that we've been testing out and putting in place over the past few years. Um, so first off, we did run a survey, a community survey. Uh, this was online, asking people, should we make these permanent? It was a basic four-question survey. And, uh, we had 73% of respondents said yes, we should make those crosswalk signs at Ridge and Oakford Park permanent. And, uh, 27% said no. So it's pretty strong. Uh, we also wanted to find out if the crossing experience across Ridge has changed since those were out there. So we asked, have you crossed Oakland Ridge, uh, at Oakland Park on foot since those signs were placed in the street? Basically half of the respondents, 43, said they had, 46 had said they had not. And then, uh, the follow-up question to that was what happened when you crossed on foot? And so here we had about 15% said a car stopped, uh, for the person crossing the street all of the time. A further 15% said a car stopped some, but not all of the time. Uh, a further 5 or 6% said cars did not stop for them. And then the remainder said that, uh, there was either no car at the intersection when they crossed or that they didn't, didn't cross the street. And then we also had three pages of qualitative, uh, open-ended responses, which the 73, uh, 27 split, uh, hewed pretty closely to the comments that we got qualitatively. So, um, we got some pretty good survey data there. Um, anecdotally, you know, just from, from going out there and watching driver behavior, um, I have seen cars stop at those crosswalks when people were waiting to cross there. But beyond that, I've started to see cars stop for people at other crosswalks on the street.
I had that happen.
Yeah.
Awesome.
So at, at Hanover, um, I saw a car stop for people crossing it just today. When I was coming back to City Hall after I ran home, I grabbed a bike to eat before the meeting, somebody stopped for a person crossing, uh, at Cambridge.
Which is long.
So, um, you know, I think it's, it's, there's a little bit of a knock-on effect and, you know, you're seeing some, some secondary effects from those signs as well. So, um, that's just observational, you know, point in time, um, kind of data points, but that was heartening. So, taking a step back, before we kind of talk about this specific issue and getting the, getting your guidance on whether we make those signs permanent or not, uh, I wanted to take a step back and, and kind of revisit where we were in 2014 before we started all of these efforts. And this is just what Ridge used to look like, um, before we started doing all of the things we've been doing. And then today, um, took a picture in the rain a few weeks ago, so, you know, it's not sunny and bright, but this is what it looks like today. And so the new edge striping, we put that in a few years ago, refreshed it with the road, uh, road project, the ladder crosswalks, uh, been shown to increase pedestrian safety, the signs, the radar speed sign that we put in and then off in the far distance, you can see the mid-block crossing we put at Roosevelt School. So those are kind of the package of efforts that we've been working on on Ridge. And so what are the results of that? Well, in 2014, when we first collected our speed data, this was your speed curve. Um, and over time, what we can see is how that changed. So in 2014, uh, with the previous condition of Ridge where it was deteriorating and bumpy, uh, 2016, we put in the edge stripes and the radar speed sign. And this is how it moved traffic speeds. 2018, it actually moved up a little bit slightly. Um, this was after we reconstructed the street. And typically what you see is if you just reconstruct a street and do nothing, travel speeds go up two to three miles an hour. Um, so here, with the, uh, efforts we took, travel speeds went up slightly, but it stayed pretty consistent. Uh, and then when we put in the pedestrian signs, you can see there's a slight movement in the distribution. Uh, and then just to put it in context, this was 2014 in the orange here, and then this is with the pedestrian test. So there has been a difference. Um, December 2014, the first measurements we took, average speed was 28 and a half, 85th percentile speed was 32.3. Um, and the count was 35, 36 hundred cars. Now, the average speed's been reduced by two miles an hour. Similarly, 85th percentile speeds are down about two and a half miles an hour. And this is, this doesn't account for the two mile an hour increase that we avoided, that you almost always see when you redo a street. So effectively, we've reduced the 85th percentile speed by almost five miles an hour. So that's a 15% reduction versus what we used to see.
That's great.
These numbers on Ridge are now actually very comparable with what we see on all the other streets in town. Um, so it's, it's slower than, uh, some of this, it's slower than Oakland Park and Oxford. And it's, uh, about the same as Cambridge or some of the other more heavily traveled residential streets that aren't the regional collectors. So, you know, I think the efforts have paid off and have, uh, resulted with some measurable decreases in traffic speeds. Um, and I think we're seeing some, you know, some qualitative increases in driver behavior, uh, along the street. Um, and then just to get real broad, we already talked about that at Oakland Park and Woodward. And the next street that we're gonna be focusing on, um, is we want to take a look and we want to make some improvements on Woodward Heights next year. Similar to what we did on Ridge, where we started testing some of these projects, seeing how they panned out and then doing to implement them permanently. We'll be doing the same process on Woodward Heights. And, and the reason for that is because Woodward Heights and Ridge are, are, are two have most heavily traveled streets. They're the streets that connect to the region, so they just carry more traffic. Um, and we want to focus on making Woodward Heights, uh, a little safer, a little easier to cross and, um, you know, breathe it, hopefully achieving some of the same outcomes that we've achieved on Ridge so far. Uh, for that, um, to that effect, we're developing a traffic calming manual that's going to apply for all city streets. So it'll have some options for residents of any street to opt in to some traffic calming measures if residents of a street want to. City will work with them to figure out ways that we can do that. But we'll also be, uh, talking about the specific things that we're gonna be testing out and looking to implement on Woodward Heights next spring. looking to implement on Woodward Heights next spring and summer. And we're looking at January of next year to hold that meeting. Just want to put it out there. We're waiting for the big room project at the Community Center to be done so we can have that back, so we're gonna be holding a meeting that we, of a size that we expect on this topic. You know, it's the thing we hear about maybe more than anything else, as far as issues in the city. So, we'll be notifying everyone and letting everyone know about that as we gear up for the 2019 spring and summer traffic construction and testing season. So, with that, to bring it back to the Oakwood Park and Ridge Road pedestrian signs, the question that we're looking for input is, should we make those permanent? The ones we have out there are temporary signs. You can get ones that actually bolt into the street, they have a little bit narrower base, and then those become permanent. Just in terms of what we do, I don't think, we can't make the one on the south side of the intersection permanent. We're testing it there, just kind of a big bang to get a little more density of those signs, but it does impact the radius for the driveway.
The driveway.
For the resident that's there at 38 Ridge. One of the things we need to do is, we may be able to do another one of these signs at a different location along Ridge, but we do have a lot of driveways. And we do have to, you know, make sure that we account for those. We could look to put some signs on the side, but those don't have the same effectiveness. The one in the middle really does cause drivers to have to stop and pay attention. So, that has some extra benefit beyond just the, you know, education level. We could look at some other complementary signage elsewhere along the street, but, you know, Farnale put in the flashing beacon signs, but that's a $10,000 or $15,000 investment versus the $200 investment that these signs are.
And as you said, you don't see it right in your...
Right.
Sorry, just to interrupt, but in your write-up, you talked about plowing and that you can't have anything sitting in the middle of the road.
Right.
Permanent, because snowplows, because of the winter.
Yep.
So, what happens? So, how do we deal with that?
So, you...
And the signs are not, make no sense.
Right.
Nobody minds.
Well, yeah.
Very little.
I tend to agree that they don't have the same level of effectiveness. You do the same thing where I looked, those, the ones that they did on Main Street are the bolted-in ones, you just unbolt them.
Unbolt.
And take them away for the wintertime. And then, you go in and reinstall them in the summer. That's the one, maybe one nice thing about asphalt streets is that you can bolt things to them much easier than a concrete street. Doesn't have the same, I guess, difficulty and impact on the street itself.
You don't have a freeze soft problem with the holes?
Yeah.
Jim, you said something about an opt-in ideas for neighbors, for the streets, like, what are you talking about?
Well, that would be for the broader traffic calming.
Okay.
The traffic calming manual, basically what we're doing is we're just collating all of the proven traffic calming methods. And, you know, some of the tools are appropriate in some locations and, you know, not appropriate in others. What we're intending on this program doing is, you know, Woodward Heights and Ridge, the city will be proactive and focus on those, just because of the traffic volumes and the character of the streets.
Right.
For all the other residential streets in town, and I'm not sure exactly how this will work yet, but if the residents of that street want to basically get together and say, we want to do something on our street, then we will say, great, we'll work with you. But the city's not gonna be coming and saying, we're gonna be doing, you know, this, this and this on your street to calm traffic, just because, one, the traffic volumes are lower in those other streets. And when you have residential streets, there's a lot of things you have to balance when you need traffic calming. So, we want to make sure that we have the support and the requests coming from the people who live on that street, and then, you know, we'll figure out what we can do with them.
Thanks. Any other questions?
Thank you, Mayor. I think the response on the survey and just anecdotal feedback, you know, has been overall positive. I think, you know, having these reminders about pedestrian safety is very important. I would, I've been in many municipalities, and I know at the Ford campus in Dearborn where I work, they have an incredible infrastructure of pedestrian sidewalks, and they utilize the flashing beacons. If we had Ford Motor Company's budget, I would like to see those throughout our community. But I think taking those initial steps is a very positive way to address this issue of increased pedestrian safety. On the issue of the traffic calming manual, this is something that staff is designing internally. Will there be a public hearing on approval for that, or that be something that just comes before this body for approval, or is that something just will be issued administratively?
No, like the Street Tree Manual and the Design Guidelines.
Yes.
Those were both adopted by the City Commission.
Good.
This will be in the same process.
Okay, great. And this is an auxiliary issue. I don't know if we really want to get into it right now, but the no turn on red, which was mentioned previously this evening at Oakwood Park, to turn south onto Woodward. And glad to see, you know, the police have been busy addressing that implementation. Some of the feedback I've gotten from residents on that particular solution was positive overall, but I did hear many mentions of the actual signage, the size, the actual physical size of the sign. Is that something that could be increased or, you know, made more visible, or is that just something that, over time, people get used to?
I think people get used to it. We have added additional signs in the median. So, now, there's not only the sign on the right side of the road as you approach the intersection, there's also one that's in the Woodward median, kind of staring you in the face as you drive up to it. So, hopefully, that will help. We are sensitive to aesthetics and sign clutter. So, you know, I think that the approach that I would suggest we take on this is wait and see, and as people get more familiar with it, just see how it goes. If we have to, you know, put in the bigger signs, then we will.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
And, you know, that'll be a feedback from enforcement, you know, as the police enforce this. Let us know if there's issues there, if we need to make, you know, a call on making that sign bigger.
Okay, all right. Thank you. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other? Okay. Can move on.
Well, is there a guidance on making those permanent?
Do you need us to make a motion?
I don't make a motion.
Yeah, a motion would be nice.
Okay. I was going to hop.
Oh, you're gonna, okay.
Ask you if you want a motion. Anybody would like to make one?
I will.
Okay.
I'll make the motion that we make the markers permanent on Ridge Road.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, maybe we have a vote, please?
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Kriziek?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. There you go, your motion, right?
All right.
No, good. I was just amazed that it actually lowered a little bit additionally, which is always good. Well, I did have one question. The two, the October 14, or the December 14 and October 18, was it the same period of time, basically, in terms of the span in which you were collecting the data?
Roughly.
Because I was just, I was amazed by the count so being so close, and I just wondered if you...
That was, the count was average daily traffic.
Okay, that's average, so average daily traffic is still...
So, that's ADT, yep. And then, and then the...
So, you've only added 50 car difference over the four years.
Right. And, you know, that just could be...
Right.
And that could, that could be October versus December, you know, for the ADT being slightly more. And then, the other thing, just on the graphs specifically, those were percentages, so those weren't actual numbers. So, that's how we normalize, you know, when you have a seven-day count versus a five-day count. We just do a percentage breakdown for the distribution chart.
Do you have, speaking of Woodward Heights, do you have, do we have old data going back to 2014 for other areas of the city, or for some type?
We do.
Do we have kind of a list of time frames?
We do. So, we measured Woodward Heights at the direct middle point in between the Indiana and the Bermuda stop signs. We did that in 2015, I believe. It was one of the first streets that we measured. So, we do have that baseline data, but we'll be using that next year when we're looking at some of these tests.
Good.
Because the concern a lot of people have is that when you take a stop sign out at Bermuda, traffic speeds are just gonna go up. But that is not at all proven in any of the research, or, you know, they've been studying traffic calming and the impact of all of these traffic control and traffic calming measures. And stop signs influence traffic speeds for about 100 or 150 feet on either side. And then, when you have a stop sign that drivers don't think is necessary, you sometimes get higher travel speeds, as they speed up to, you know, and speed away annoyed from the traffic sign. So, actually, stop signs are just intersection control. But we took the measurement at the very midpoint between those two stop signs because it was the point in Pleasant Ridge that was the farthest away from a stop sign. So, theoretically, that would be where your highest travel speeds would be measured. And that was, there's 800 feet between the two streets, Bermuda and Indiana, so that was 400 feet in the middle of those. So, yeah, we will, we'll also look at those, look at the data.
Because I'm also interested in traffic volume, just since you closed off Fairwood, you know, just because of the changes that have occurred over on the east side and some development, whether, whether we've seen more traffic.
Right.
On Woodward Heights now than we did previously.
So, Fairwood was closed already when we did the measurement.
Okay.
In 2015, I think, on Woodward Heights, we measured 2,800 or 2,850 for a volume.
Okay.
You do have a traffic engineer studying the stop signs. One of the things with stop signs is by law now, you have to meet warrants to put one in. You can't just put a stop sign because we think it'd be a good idea legally by Michigan State law now. And actually, when we adopted the, when Michigan adopted the Uniform Traffic Control Manual in 2003 or 2005, every city was supposed to go around and study all of their stop signs to make sure that they were all warranted and to remove any ones that weren't. We haven't done that, most cities haven't done that. But, you know, that's the environment we operate in now. But, to bring it back to the question about traffic volumes, we've used one traffic count machine that does speed and volume. It's a radar machine. The traffic engineer did a count using the tubes along Woodward Heights. So, he actually got a count of 3,400 cars at Bermuda on Woodward Heights. That could just be a difference between the measurement tools that we're using. You know, all of our internal measurements are consistent, so even if there's some, you know, variance in that, I don't know if traffic volumes have increased that much in the last three years on Woodward Heights, or if it's just a measurement question. But, yeah, that's where they are now. So, basically, Woodward Heights and Ridge are basically equivalent in terms of volumes. And the regional data, you know, we know that Woodward Heights, as you go down in Hazel Park, is 4,500 cars a day. So, it just picks up volume as you, you know, move away.
Okay, cool. Thank you. Okay, any further? All right. Move on to the next item, placement of flags in and on city-owned property. Brought this up last commission meeting.
Yes. So, the way that we approached this, to bring it back, is we thought the easiest way to do this would be, the easiest way to do this would be to adopt a municipal policy. Let's meet bureaucrats.
Shall we?
Let's do it.
So, what we did is we crafted a municipal flag display policy. And we went through the inventory, the location of all flags on or in public property, listing what those flags are. And then, you know, if there are any, you know, notes, one specific thing is on the pool deck, we have located that we do fly a United States flag on limited display during swim meets for the National Anthem. But then, it's, you know, it goes away beyond that. So, and in the Community Center, we have some interior flags that are sometimes on display, sometimes not. That building gets a lot of use and those flags in the public space. And we don't necessarily need them in the Community Center, so sometimes they're out, sometimes they're not. So, the flag policy is in your packet. The one thing that we didn't include was the flags that Fisher Kriziek had specifically brought up last month. What we are suggesting that the commission do is take a look at the baseline of where we have all these flags, and then, based on your guidance tonight, you can adopt the policy and then add in the flags we want to display at other locations. So, now, we have all of the locations where they're displayed in front of you, so you can look at this and see, you know, what's where and what we might want to add. So, just to go run through this real quick, City Commission chambers, we have four flag poles. We have a United States, a Michigan, and Oakland County, and a Michigan Municipal League flag, which is nice, I suppose, but we could replace the Michigan Municipal League flag with something else. We could add another flag pole. We can do whatever you would like to do. Memorial Park, we have three flag poles with a United States, a Michigan, and a Pleasant Ridge flag. At the Blue Star Corner, we have three flag poles, again, United States, Michigan, Pleasant Ridge. The Community Center, we have one flag pole with the United States flag. On limited display in the Community Center, we have a United States, a Michigan, and a Pleasant Ridge flag. And then, again, on the pool deck, we have the U.S. flag out for pool, for swim meets. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, or to turn it over to you to discuss and provide your guidance. Were there any questions first, first off?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I had a question, just a technical question. The ability to add to an existing flag pole, maybe something Scott or... So, if we wanted to add, let's say, the MIA POW flag underneath the United States flag in Memorial Park or Blue Star, would both of those flag poles be able to accommodate that?
Yes.
Yeah, they should be able to. We have a flag company that comes and changes those, and they could tell us the proper size for those two, because the poles have a certain tensile strength based on the size of the flag, what they can tell us, but I believe they can.
And I know in the administrative policy, it says amended or updated by resolution. Would we be able to adopt this policy this evening, or will we adopt the policy and then there would be a resolution that would be necessary to add flags in the future?
Yeah, so, the resolution you would adopt tonight would be, you know, we adopt this policy with these changes.
Okay.
And then, you know, a year from now, if you want to add another flag somewhere else, you just adopt a resolution to, you know, add that flag at this location and then update the policy.
Right. And also, that ability enables future commissions to either add or detract.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Other questions?
Are there any other? I mean, that seems like a reasonable way to go.
Right.
So, the solution will be, like, using existing flag poles and, like, adding to that type of thing?
Well, I mean, we can always add flag poles if we want to budget for it, but the easy solution would be to, you know, you can don't, you can...
Using existing real estate?
Yeah.
Except if we add and add permanent or something in the commission chambers.
Exactly. Right. And I, you know, the Michigan Municipal Flag, nice, the Municipal League flag is nice, but we can easily swap that for something else.
Hope it doesn't hurt their feelings.
I think they'll be fine.
I think they'll be okay, as long as they get their due, so. Right?
Right.
Can I move for a resolution? Who wants to?
Well, um...
Did you, did you want to discuss?
No, I think we discussed it last month. We had a pretty fruitful discussion last month. We gave some guidance. I really appreciate the work that Jim and staff have done. It's very clear. It spells out, you know, the right of city as to display these flags as a form of government speech, and that the City Commission shall have the sole ability to either add or detract. This is the point that you made. I think that's very appropriate. Yeah, so, I'm very comfortable with the policy as written and the ability to add. Yeah, so I'm very comfortable with the policy as written and the ability to add, and I would be prepared to make a motion if there were no other questions or discussion.
No other questions? Please. If you would be so kind.
So I would like to make a motion to adopt Administrative Policy Number 2018-01 with the addition of the POW/MIA flag and the rainbow flag, Rainbow Pride flag, under Flags on Permanent Display in City Commission Chambers, and the addition of the POW/MIA flag under Flags on Permanent Display on Memorial Park Flag Pole, under the flag of the United States of America.
Yeah, I have too, because that wasn't part of the-
So the motion would be to add, add the rainbow flag and the POW to city commission chambers, and then the POW/MIA flag to Memorial Park.
On permanent or limited display?
My motion would be that the flags in the city commission chambers would be on permanent display, and that the flag, the POW/MIA flag under the flags would be on permanent display. I included those under Flags on Permanent Display. So the motion I have is that they would be on display permanently.
I'd be more comfortable if we had a motion to accept the resolution that's been provided to us, and then have further discussion on flags.
It can fail for lack of, for lack of a second.
What's that? Oh, well, we could take it, yeah.
Thank you, Thomas.
Thanks, Tom, yeah. I mean, we-
Just procedure, I mean, kind of get through the-
We do have to go through. So a resolution, or a, do you have?
Yeah. So if anybody has-
So I'm sorry, can you explain your-
So I was trying to do in one motion, two things. If the, if the group is more comfortable doing two motions for two separate things, I'm perfectly fine with that.
Could you say your motion again? No, I'm sorry.
So my motion was to adopt Administrative Policy Number 2018 with the addition of the POW/MIA flag and the Rainbow Pride flag under Flags on Permanent Display in City Commission Chambers, and the addition of the POW/MIA flag under Flags on Permanent Display in Memorial Park, on Memorial Park Flag Poles, under the flag of the United States of America. So that's the motion I present.
Okay. I will second that.
Is there any discussion which you can continue to digest?
Yes.
Do we want to eliminate the Municipal League Flag in the process?
We have to. Don't we have any other flag?
The motion I presented is with the addition of-
Then we'd have six flags.
It's with the addition of not asking for-
Six flags.
-a municipal flag to be removed.
Right.
Yes.
Did you have any discussion?
Yeah, yes, just thinking back to our discussion last month, and considering the fact that
there might be other occasions that require the limited display of flags, and the number of flags that that might entail over time, it might make sense to make the additional two flags, limited display flags, even if that limit is indefinite, so that we have the ability to swap flags as necessary for additional flags to be displayed. So it's not to say that we wouldn't necessarily have them on display prominently. It's only to say that I can envision the need to have other flags on display. That's, that would be my thought. So I'm inclined to, to, to not be in favor of this motion, only because I think they might be better served as limited display, even though limited might mean a lot of time.
Long-term.
Any other discussion?
Of course, of course, even if we make them permanent, it doesn't prevent us from having another meeting and swapping them out again, even in, even in the next month.
Yeah. And I think that was, that's why I appreciated the clarification and the wording, because it could be amended or updated at any time, right? So even if it was a future commission or this commission, we could, you know-
Yes.
-amend.
So, I mean, I think it's a good point. The Michigan Municipal League, I think, is probably not something that is, while they serve a great purpose, they, they're probably okay if their flag is not a part of our permanent display. I, I mean, I, I understand your point. In the seven years I've been doing this, we haven't, I don't think, have we changed flags at all? Okay. So, I mean, I'm comfortable with the, the motion if, and then adding, like, maybe reducing the Michigan Municipal Flag.
Just so that I'm clear, we, there's no problem hanging flags beneath the next flag?
Outside?
Yeah.
No, the, the flag company that we have is Mr. Kuziak's, who will determine the size that would be, that that pole would be able to accommodate.
Got it. Okay. Okay. Okay, good.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All right, let's put it to a vote, please.
Commissioner Kuziak?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Motion carries. Okay, next item, city managers' report.
We've talked about most things that are going on.
It's been a comprehensive meeting.
It has been. I guess one thing that I want to update on is we did, we have been working with the DDA, looking at some options for refreshing the Woodward streetscape. So they have been reviewing some concept plans, and we went forward and we've submitted an application to the DEQ for a stormwater infiltration grant to help refurbish the Woodward streetscape along the east side of Woodward. So that was for a $600,000 grant from the DEQ, and then the DDA would be providing the rest of that project. So we're hopeful. We won this grant for Gainsborough Park, but the DEQ has about a 29-month lead time on actually giving you any money, and we waited 29 months to build Gainsborough Park, so we said, okay, we'll pass. But we stayed in contact with DEQ and kind of sketched this project out with them as an option before submitting, so keep our fingers crossed for that one.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah.
Excellent.
And then we will be doing, we did talk about some of the trees. We are getting into our tree maintenance season, so we always make our list and do our evaluations throughout the year. One of the things that we're going to be doing this year is the entire east side is going to be elevated. So a lot of the streets on the east side haven't been trimmed up or elevated.
Oh.
Block elevating. We're just talking about the trees. So there's, expect to see some, some work and some improvements on the tree canopy in town in coming months. And we did lose a number of pears in Indiana. Unfortunately, that battle has been lost, but we will be replacing those this fall. We'll also be planting a number of new trees on Ridge as well, so expect to see some new trees soon.
It's exciting.
And I'd be happy to answer any questions, anyone on anything we didn't talk about tonight?
They did a beautiful job, though, with the removal and, like, the stump removal and all that.
Right. Those will be restored in the spring, so they're going to be putting down some grass seed and everything in the spring to reseed that. It won't just be left the way it is.
Any other questions, did you? Last chance. All right, let's move on to other business. We've got some other business. Start with a book.
Thank you, Mayor. This is happening tomorrow evening at the Community Center, The Rent Collector by Cameron Wright. It's a story of survival in Cambodia. Very poor existence for the main characters in this book, and they survive by relying on each other, kindness of strangers, and it's very grueling. It's a, it's an unflinching portrait of poverty, global poverty, and well-acclaimed book. So we'll be reading this, we are reading it. We'll be discussing it tomorrow at the Community Center, The Rent Collector by Cameron Wright. So please join us if you're interested in discussing, tomorrow at 7:00 at the Community Center. And I don't know, did you want to talk about that, or?
You could certainly mention it.
Okay, it was something that I think Brett and I were talking about. The Coffee with Commissioners, it's something that-
Oh, great. Yeah, for sure. Bring that up.
Yeah, we talked about doing that. It's something that we've done occasionally over the years. It's been a while since the last one, so we thought it'd be a good opportunity just to touch base with everybody and give them an opportunity to come and hang out and have some coffee. With the situation at the Community Center, we thought maybe we could squeak out some good weather and hold it at Gainsborough. So Tuesday, October 23rd, at 7:00 at Gainsborough, we'll have our October edition of Coffee with Commissioners. It's really informal gathering. We'll be there, you know, we can chit chat about whatever's going on and-
Donuts?
Are you bringing donuts?
Yeah, I think we should have donuts.
We should have donuts.
Not just coffee.
Yeah, we should. Okay.
There's leftovers left over from Sunday.
Oh, my gosh.
Just bringing leftovers.
There's never anything-
No, I know.
But usually it's a really good evening of exchange, and it's something that I know we're all looking forward to. So that'll be on Tuesday, October 23rd, 7:00 at Gainsborough Park. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. Any other? I wanted to add, I know that the 21st, we talked about the Halloween hayride and everything. On the 20th and the 21st, Iron Ridge is having harvest days.
Oh, yeah.
So I think it's from 10:00 to 4:00 each day. So, you know, our new neighbors, our new developments on the other side of the tracks should be a good, I think they put on good events, so certainly their grand opening was great, and should be fun. So you can, you've got both Saturday and Sunday, or you can go to one on Saturday, both on Sunday. It should be a good time.
So it's 10:00 AM to 4:00?
10:00 to 4:00. Yep. Both days. And then this is our last meeting before the election that's coming up. If you don't remember, today was the last day for registration. Too bad if you didn't register. But the election on November the 6th, we, as you have heard before, we are in a contest with Huntington Woods for the highest voter turnout. The highest voter turnout gets $1,000 toward their recreation department, so it'd be really nice. We're always real close. We're always neck and neck. We're always one and two, so let's make us one instead of two.
It's beautiful.
We have, Amy has put sample ballots in the front, at the front office, at the front desk, so if anybody needs information, wants to see what the ballot is and start practicing so that when they get to the booth, they don't spend all their time trying to figure out who these judges are, that would be helpful. And then the League for Women Voters, we have copies of this also at the front desk, the whole information booklet. So you should be able to read up on all the candidates and get information on what their, what the issues are, the three proposals that are on the ballot, as well as the various candidates. Quite a few, quite a few offices up for election. And the other, the other thing I wanted to mention is absentee ballots. I mean, it's important that if you're not going to be around, or if you meet certain, the obvious guidelines on absentee, please get an absentee ballot. Please fill it out and send it in. Can, when can people?
Their applications are available on the website. People can give me a call. I think there's been mass mailings from parties and different action groups for absentee ballot applications. You have until 2:00 PM on the Saturday before, which is November 3rd. Yep.
Yes.
I'll be here that Saturday from 9:00 to 2:00 issuing absentee ballots, so you have until 2:00 PM to call and pick up your ballot. And they're, they're ready now. They're going out every, every night. We're putting them in mail.
One question. I've listened to a lot of election stuff. There's always talk about young people not voting, and a lot of them using the excuse that they're away at school, and they're supposed to vote at their home, and they can't get home. Now, is that a good enough excuse for an absentee ballot? Can they get an absentee ballot?
It depends. If they registered in person, say if they came into the office and registered with me in person with their ID, then yes, they could, they could apply for an absentee ballot because they've satisfied the Michigan ID requirement. If they registered by mail, or they mailed it in because they printed it off the website, mailed it in, they would have to vote in person their first election. But if they come in and apply for an absentee ballot, like if they're home for a break or something before the election, or their college maybe is close enough, they can come in and apply in person with their ID, and that will satisfy the ID requirement, the Michigan ID requirement.
Excellent.
So there are, it is, it gets tricky, especially if somebody's out of state and they registered by mail, then-
Right, then there's little chance.
So make Saturday the third your laundry day.
Okay, well, that's good to know, so that there are possible-
And, you know, anyone can give me a call or shoot me an email if they have questions about their registration. I normally put a link up to the state's website. That is the website that you're going to want to use to verify your registration. I know there are some other websites out there, but the state's website is the most up-to-date information of where you're registered, what your polling location is. They have copies of sample ballots on their site. I have copies of sample ballots on our website, so there are, there are other ways that you can get the information.
And I don't expect, I mean, you know, I hope for long lines only because that means a lot of people showing up, but I know that you plan so well that the lines never get too long. And even if we have to wait in line, it's a great time to talk to neighbors and eat cookies and coffee.